This is a virtual meeting using the Zoom platform. Members of the public can view this meeting live on Channel Eight where the city's website. Live Spanish translation services are being provided for tonight's council meeting by telephone. Please dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four zero nine one star. If you're a council or board member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on Channel Eight and on our city's website. The chat function is disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and INRT staff will be the co-host. Council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you've finished speaking and remember to lower your virtual hand to prevent disruptions. Members of the public who have registered to speak will be recognized at the proper time. As a reminder, we will use roll call votes only when required by law or when requested by a council member or the clerk. Other votes will be voice votes counted by raising hands in the Zoom app or as the chair determines. If a member disagrees with the stated outcome of the vote or feels that their vote was not properly heard or is not recognized, the member should immediately request the mayor's attention. This time I will call the Urban Renewal Authority meeting to order and ask the secretary to call the roll.
Chair Hughesman.
Present.
Vice Chair Frank. Commissioner Madera.
Present.
Commissioner Alan Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner Noble.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Wadiola.
Present.
Commissioner Hurst.
Present.
Commissioner Grimes.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Fairfield. Commissioner Tedesco. Commissioner Lewis.
Present.
Commissioner Boucher. Chair Hughesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This time I'm looking for a motion and a second to excuse those members not present. Board Member Grimes.
So moved.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Second motion.
Have a motion and a second to excuse those members not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote. Please use physical in the chat window so that your vote can be counted. It is going to pass one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Yes, and one opposed. And Councilmember Wadiola not registering a vote will be the opposed. This time we'll move on to presentations. First presentation is the Derby entryway signage design review. I'd like to invite Jenna Lowry, management analyst, to make the presentation.
Thank you very much, sir. Go ahead and begin my screen share. Good evening, CCR A board members. I'm here tonight to provide an update and request feedback on the ongoing effort to revitalize the Derby Downtown District, starting with the entryway signage projects. The purpose of this first presentation is to provide a recap of the 2018 Derby Wayfinding signage plan, review the bids that staff received for the project, and request the board's direction on which fabricator we should proceed with. As you all know, the historic Derby Downtown District is an important part of Commerce City's identity. However, the current visitor experience is largely isolated and disconnected between the different destinations. As such, revitalizing the area, re-establishing it as a destination, and enhancing the area are the primary goals of the Derby Master Plan. In an effort to achieve these goals, City Council approved a plan to upgrade both street lighting and signage elements in the Derby area. The branding, signage, and wayfinding portion of the plan represents a unique opportunity to create a level of connection and storytelling throughout Derby. Based on 2018 costs, staff budgeted $50,000 for the project for an entryway sign as a first phase. The second phase will be to add smaller wayfinding signs throughout the area, and staff intends to use Healthy Places funds to install those signs in the future. Through a series of community workshops and meetings with the Derby residents and business owners, as well as both the Derby Review Board and City Council, a location and design for an entryway sign were established. The sign will be located at the northeast intersection of East Seventy Second Avenue and Highway Two, which is where the old Derby Tire Building was once located. The design vision that was created from those meetings was titled Googie Derby and was created as a playful, colorful, and iconic form of the 1950s. Staff did provide that design sketch in the request for bids package that was sent out earlier this year. Also, based on feedback received from the CCUR A board in October of 2020, staff did request that bidders consider utilizing solar energy to power the site. A staff is supportive of using solar energy for the sign for a few reasons, with the most important being that the site is currently not wired for traditional electricity, so that effort would be costly. Earlier this year, staff received three complete bids for the sign, and the Derby Review Board has had the opportunity to review and improve all three designs. However, that board did have a good discussion about each of the designs. Overall, the board discussed the location of the sign and whether the engine exhaust produced by the area's traffic would stain a white sign. Further, a few board members did have a preference of not using white material for the sign due to the potential wear and tear associated with the color. However, the board did ultimately decide to allow for white coloring if the CCUR A prefers a white design. So with all of that in mind, I will go ahead and walk through each of the three bids for the sign with you all. This is the rendering provided by bidder one. The sign would be approximately 12 feet tall and 10 feet wide with a silver finish. Please note that those dimensions do not include the steel rod and a fixed aluminum sphere on the right side of the sign. This is also the least favored design by the Derby Review Board. Here are some additional details from the first bid package. This better certainly represents the most expensive option. As you can see, the solar system option adds approximately $38,000 to the project, which is reflected in the 104,500,000 project, excuse me, 104,500,000 project total. The solar option would illuminate the sign's LED bulbs for approximately 12 hours a day and will also be able to operate for three days without being charged. So that would be in the case of inclement weather without sunlight. This is the rendering provided by the second bidder. This particular sign would be approximately seven feet tall and eight feet wide with a multi-colored finish. And again, those dimensions do not include the rod or the sphere on the right side of the sign. In terms of price, bidder two is our middle bidder. The solar system for the sign adds approximately $31,000 to the project with a project total coming in just shy of $98,000. This bidder did not provide information regarding illumination length or bulb type. So that's something we would have to discuss with them further if the board chooses this option. And here is our third and final design that we received. This sign would be approximately 11 feet tall and 15 feet wide with a white finish. And once again, those dimensions do not include the rod or sphere on the right side of the sign. Bidder three does represent our lowest bid. The solar system for this particular sign would cost around $10,000 and would provide approximately 10 hours of illumination for non-LED bulbs. The project total would be roughly $65,000. So before we move on to the next slide, I want to highlight a few points that are applicable to all three of our bidders. First, those estimated totals do not include any taxes and fees. Second, if the board likes the overall design but not the color or bulb type of one of the bidders, staff can certainly work with that fabricator to modify their plan. Also, if the board does not desire to use solar energy to illuminate the sign at night, the site can be wired for electricity. But again, Public Works does estimate that work would be costly to get the wiring put in place. The last item to note is that all three bids did come in higher than the $50,000 that staff budgeted for in 2018. That said, the increase in both materials and construction costs do make sense, but staff would need approval from the CCUR A to utilize Derby Catalyst Funds to cover the difference. Currently, we have about $439,000 available in that fund, and we acquired that balance just from our annual appropriation. However, staff does want to be able to utilize as much of that money as possible to help install the new lighting in the Derby area that we'll discuss during the next presentation. So after our meeting tonight, the next project step will be for staff to notify the preferred fabricator and work on any modifications that the CCUR A deems appropriate. Then the sign will be installed after both the Water District and Excel Energy have completed their work around the entryway sign. Lastly, once the sign has been installed, our Parks, Recreation, and Golf staff will actually treat the sign with an anti-graffiti spray that will make any necessary cleanup easier. And that's a very common practice for us around the city. So at this time, we have a few different questions for the board to consider. First, we'd like to know who your preferred fabricator is from bidders one through three. But we'd also like to know if the board would like to proceed with the design as presented by that fabricator or if we should ask the fabricator to scale back the size of the sign to reduce cost or if we should make any changes to the fabricator's coloring option for the sign. And the last question for the board tonight will be whether or not you want to utilize solar energy to power the sign. And something to keep in mind when you're making that consideration is that the solar option will require the installation of a small solar array, and that will impact the aesthetics of the immediate area. So I appreciate your time. That does include this presentation. I figure I can leave this slide up so we can keep the questions in mind. And I'm also happy to revisit any of the designs from the bidders. Thank you.
Board Member Wadiola.
Thank you, Chair. I like option one. I think, to me, I know it's the most expensive, but that sign is really going to stand out, and Derby needs a facelift. And I think option one does that for us. I think it has to be solar. You know, especially this is our shot to do that. So I would do, just as it is, I like the big logo. I like the Derby. So I would go with option one. Thank you.
Board Member Grimes.
Thank you, Chair. I really like option two. The thing that jumped down on that one to me is the drilled-out holes on the pillar that will also be illuminated. And I think that's kind of a neat feature that the other signs don't offer. And I'd like to see solar installation but with the option for backup power in the event that there's not enough solar to power it. I'd hate to see this go in and then have times where it's not lit when it should be, so.
Thank you.
Oh, one more comment on that one. I do wish that the Commerce City sign was a little bit larger on it, kind of like the first one.
Okay, that is good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Noble.
Yes, thank you. Could you tell me what the thinking was in terms of the overall design? All three are the same. It's, you know, with minor differences between them. Was this the only option that they were presented with?
Certainly. I'm happy to elaborate on that further. So the design that we provided the bidders, yes, this was the only sketch. And the reason we only provided this option is because that's what came out of the 2018 plan. And so that's what the community board members and city council and the URA at the time elected to go with. So that's why we only shared that particular design.
Okay, so this is a design from three years ago. And what relevance? Help me here to understand the relevance that a 50s-style reminds me of the original Disneyland sign, by the way. What relevance it has to the area?
So I think the idea behind it was they were just trying to be artistic and bring something fun and exciting to the area. And part of that coloring scheme, particularly the red that you see in all the signs, is a color that was pulled into the lighting portion of the plan. All of the new lighting poles that staff intends to install have that same color pulled into them. So just a fun design to revitalize the area. It comes out of the Derby Area Master Plan that has been in place for a while.
Did Derby begin in the 50s?
Ooh, you know, it certainly didn't. So I'm not sure why that was the preferred design for the board at the time.
I may have some slight insights. I represented the Derby Review Board for a number of years.
Great, thank you, Robert.
Well, and I am obviously not a planner or architect. Googie architecture is the dominant style that is intended to be incorporated throughout Derby whenever the URA funds signage or anything else. And I think that looking thing or snooze restaurant, whatever you call it, is emblematic of that as well as the circular letters. And so I think that's why they ultimately chose that design because it was really identified with the Googie architecture concept.
Oh, that's interesting. And that was from the plan that Dana Crawford did? Or did that come after her Derby plan? The Googie emphasis.
So it did come from that plan. So the 2018 Derby-specific signage plan was built based off of the Derby Area Master Plan. So yes, that would be from Dana's plan. But, you know, a big part of why we're here tonight is because we recognize that this board is not the board that had the opportunity to weigh in on that design. We certainly wanted to make sure you liked the sign, and if not, discuss what we could do to go back out to bidders to have it modified if that's the consensus of the board.
I would prefer that it didn't have the variety of colors that it has.
On the top sphere, all the like circles coming out essentially?
And the, and the letters. I mean, something more toned down. The letters themselves are fun, if you will, and the sphere is fun, but the multiple colors is, in my opinion, is a little gaudy. I support the solar energy.
All good feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I kind of was along the same lines. I was just curious. I like the design of bidder two, but I was along the same lines as Councilwoman Grimes. Could the solar be incorporated into that, but the Commerce City larger? And I do feel like, you know, in my opinion, the bidder for number one, I felt like I was going to a carnival or an amusement park instead of, you know, like entering a city. So, you know, if we were to go with one, you know, I possibly the colors changed, but I prefer, like I said, actually sign number two, like I said, because number one, I just felt like I was entering an amusement park. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Board Member Madera.
Yeah, I don't know. I kind of like one just because the, you know, the letters are more pronounced and it's, it also lightens up the area. I think what happens, or Derby, you have a lot of, you know, the same kind of style and color scheme going on with, you know, the yellow brick. And I think adding more of that kind of just just blends in or doesn't stand out. So that's why I kind of didn't like to, because I feel like to kind of try to incorporate a little bit more of that, that brick in there. But, you know, I think part of the balance that we need to get to in Derby is, you know, lightening it up. It's so dark and, you know, not pronounced that, you know, that's kind of why I like bidder one is it stands out and provides a little contrast to the area.
Thank you.
Board Member Wadiola.
Thank you. To Councilwoman Noble's point, I think, you know, Karma City was founded in the 50s, and that board, you know, ultimately went through a process to pick this. I know it's outdated. Took us three years, but, you know, like a lot of things, it takes some time. So going back and choosing a different design, I think we've waited another three years or whenever. So I really like it. Derby has always been a historic little part of our Karma City growing up. So I was going to see, I liked what Councilwoman Grimes said about the lighting. Is there a way we could get that lit up on number one?
I am certain that we could work with the fabricators for that, yes.
Because I didn't see that, and I like that, and the more light, and it just stands out to me. If we could do that on, on option one, that would, would be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Grimes.
Thank you, Chair. And Board Member Noble, I appreciate your comments. I think for me, it's, it's a little too 50s on the nose. And is there a way to make that a little more modern, a modern version of the 50s? And is that maybe muting the colors a little bit? Or there's got to be some ways to kind of just adjust this design to make it feel new but reflect the, the origin of, you know, the, the 50s.
One option could certainly be, you know, taking the colored spheres away and having those be steel or white, whichever color the board prefers, and leaving the Derby in color if the board does still want some color in there. That's just an idea off the top of my head. You do not have to agree with it by any means.
I appreciate the feedback. That's all for now. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Board Member Hurst.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, number one, the design is, the schematic's different. It doesn't go into detail, but it, to me, looks like number one has the LED lights and each of the globes that are on the right, on those three globes. So it might, it might already be incorporated into the design. I'd say, I'd say I lean towards number one because I do like how it, it's laid out with the larger Commerce City logo on the right-hand side. But considering what everybody else said, I would like to go with number one.
Thank you.
Board Member Smith.
Thank you. I like option one as well. I just, if you've ever played bingo, the number or the, where it says Derby, it kind of looks like the bingo numbers, like the bingo balls. It just seems like Councilwoman Noble says it just kind of looks gaudy. If we could turn, tone those down just a little bit, I think that would be awesome.
Thank you for that.
Board Member Noble.
Would there be a possibility that you could run through the, the pictures one more time for us?
Absolutely.
The drawings, and also it would be really great if there would be some, you can't do it now, but for the future, to put all, all three or all four, whatever the case might be, on one slide so that we can just kind of easily compare also.
Sure, you bet.
Okay, but meantime, okay, here's one.
Yes, so here's one.
And that's steel. The, the base portion of it is steel with the balls in it. Are those balls lit up?
They would be powered with LED, yes. So it's a combination of steel and aluminum and then colored LED lights.
Okay, thanks.
Of course. Here's bidder two. Same material, same concept as bidder one. It's just multi-colored in the sign structure instead of being all steel.
Thank you.
And our final option here. Again, the same idea behind the colored bulbs, just white everywhere else.
Jenna, you mentioned that number one was the least favorite of the Derby group. Could you tell us why it was their least favorite?
So I was actually not present during that meeting. I believe Board Member Madera was though, so perhaps he could explain. I would imagine it has to do with cost.
Yeah, cost factored into that, and then also the board kind of wanted to stick with the same color scheme as Derby already, so they like the, you know, yellow brick. And, you know, some of them were concerned because the sign's going to go where the old Derby Tire used to be right down the corner of Seventy Second and Highway Two. And they were concerned that maybe it would be too close to the highway and that it would get stained with exhaust, so they weren't particularly excited about having something that was all white. I think it, based on the schematics, it looks like it should be far enough back from from the highway that I don't think that should be an issue. But that, that was a concern of the board.
But number one is steel. It's not white.
Right, but three is, is white, so that's why they kind of, by process of elimination.
But I thought they did. Jenna, did you say number bidder one was their least favorite?
It was, yes. Bidder two was the preferred option of the Derby Review Board.
Okay, could you go back to one again for a minute, please?
Sure. And again, if coloring is an issue, all of these fabricators could certainly change from white or not white.
So this one is steel. That's actually kind of interesting because of the industrial aspect to it, and the Commerce City is bigger. Okay, then two. Thank you so kind to do that. And that does need a bigger Commerce City on it. It looks kind of, what is that? Oh, and then the balls have little light dots in the balls as well, right?
Yes, just drilled out holes essentially. It would come through.
Oh, and I see. And then there's that yellow panel, and that's what Board Member Madera is referring to, that they like that yellow because it ties into Derby? To the Derby building?
So it goes from darker yellow all the way up to white across those four tiers.
I see. Okay, fades out as it goes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Board Member Grimes.
Thank you, Chair. Jenna, would it, would it be possible to make the, the little illuminated spheres clear instead of colorful? I feel like that's the loud part to me. It's, it's just really loud. And then, you know, I, I like the size and the idea of the Commerce City logo sign on number one, but I was wondering, you know, on any of these designs, could we kind of have that same type of application but backlight it?
Sure. Yes, and again, they, the fabricators are open to any modifications. And I'll go back to the first design because right now that has the most options from the board, so that way we can mull that one over during our discussion. But yes, we can make the, I call them little atoms, silver, if that's the color we go with overall. Can mute the colors on the Derby sign as well. And I'm sure a backlight would be possible, especially since it looks like the backdrop's the logo or cylinder. So I'm sure holes could be drilled in those as well.
Okay. Thanks. Well, and, and, yeah, just the colors that are chosen on this first design. The colors on designs two and three are much more kind of modern versions of those colors and muted versions. I think that would really change the look of this sign if you could have them update it to be a little bit more muted.
Not a problem. Not a problem.
Board Member Ellen Thomas.
Thank you Chair. I, um, just thought of another question too. If it, do we know approximately, um, since it took them three years to come up with these designs, like say we were to come to consensus, how long is it gonna take to have it up and going in Derby?
So the designs, the, this design sketch was prepared in 2018. Uh, staff simply did not have funding or project capacity to get it installed until this year. So once we put the RFP out, we had that back within a matter of a few weeks. So I would imagine any modifications would take, you know, a month, maybe six weeks tops. We're gonna totally change the design, in which case we have to go through a, you know, a new community workshop process, but that could be possible.
Okay, and I'm just curious to another possibility like, um, like I said, one, the colors are too loud, but have they, could you ask, can they try something, maybe running the Derby along the bottom? And maybe something like the Commerce City up at the top or, you know, just another thought, but.
Whatever the board would like to see and comes to consensus to, absolutely. We want to make sure that you're happy and proud of the sign that we installed.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Hurst.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if I could better understand that, the, the foundation on one and two. Uh, the first time I looked at number two, I almost thought there was like brick, grass, brick, grass, kind of like layered up. But then I started looking at it a little closer. Is that just bricks on the bottom, number two?
It is, yeah. So they're not layering landscaping it or anything funky like that.
Yeah, I think, you know, not really changing my decision, but I really think a, uh, kind of a combination between one and two for the similar reasons that, um, everybody's kind of pointing out. You know, going back and listening to what you said the Derby Review Board said about the color scheme. I'm not opposed to that idea. So I, I think that's, um, you know, that's something that they're really using as a positive towards why they selected number two. I think I'd be more willing to take a look at that number two. It's kind of hard to see, you know, on a, on a drawing, how well that would look in that, in that setting.
So what we can do is go back, if bitter one is still the preference, um, we can ask that fabricator to remove the colored spheres or replace them with steel. Um, if that's the coloring we like to go with and have them reflect more of those muted colors in the, the Derby lettering itself and then do a backlight on our Commerce City logo. And bring that drawing either back to the board in a public meeting or send it out over email for approval.
Board Member Madera.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest if it'd be possible to do like maybe, um, like some Edison light bulbs or something on that, that sphere, you know, kind of mix a little modern retro element to it. Cause yeah, those, uh, colors are kind of loud and that would kind of mute it a little bit while still having, you know, something bright and lighting up the area.
Certainly, that is a fresh idea. I like it. And everything else would, um, be LED just to be vibrant, I think, is what we're going for, right? So the, the lighting and the logo backdrop or is the board still okay having that lit with LED?
Board Member Ellen Thomas.
That was a mistake, Mayor, I apologize.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Board Member Lewis, we haven't heard any input from you. Do you have any opinions?
Um, I like a combination of bitter one and bitter two. I like the Commerce City on bitter one. As everybody said on bitter two, it's a little small, so it should be bigger. Um, and then I thought maybe on bitter one, if you instead made the letters colored and the other, um, part white or steel, that might mute it some too. So just, just a thought.
Staff, do you have enough input to go back to the drawing board?
We do, yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, we are going to talk about the area solar lighting feasibility discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I did want to make one more comment on the Derby sign, please.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to say that I think, uh, Jennifer had an interesting idea and that does sort of mess with the design, but, uh, the connection between Commerce City and Derby isn't completely clear. But if Commerce City is written across the top and Derby is incorporated in the sign, that maybe it would make more sense. It is Commerce City's Derby as opposed to Derby Derby. If that makes any sense. Anyway, I think Jennifer had a good point and I just wanted to endorse her idea.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move to the next presentation? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you very much. So our next topic for this evening is the lighting portion of the 2018 Lighting and Signage Plan. The purpose of this particular presentation is to provide a lighting focused recap of the Derby area plan, provide the board with an update on the project. Uh, we will share solar power feasibility findings for that new lighting and request the board's direction on utilizing solar energy to power new lighting throughout the downtown district. So first off, I'd like to start with a quick recap of the information we discussed in October of 2020. The current levels of illumination throughout the Derby area have inconsistencies in placement, lamp type, bulb color and installation date. Uh, these variations are not conducive to feelings of safety and vibrancy for residents, business owners or visitors. And they cause patrons to wonder if businesses are actually open. Moreover, these inconsistencies also create maintenance challenges for city staff. This map comes directly from the 2018 Lighting Plan and shows the different types of lighting needed throughout the Derby area. Uh, the colors of font as well on the map coincide with the CCRAs priority for installation that was given in October, depending on the funding that we have available. If funding is not available to install all lighting during the same project year, staff would prioritize the small area poles for streetlights, which are in red, followed by pedestrian lighting in yellow. Then the large area poles for drivers in orange. And finally festoon lighting, uh, which would go in the diamond area in green. Obviously everyone's hope is that we can install everything at once, but if not, that will be our order of operation, so to speak. In addition to mapping areas for installation, the lighting plan also provided examples of each style of lighting. The fixtures on this slide are color coded to match the colors on the previous slide. These fixtures were selected during a process to plan for lighting and signage that would form a cohesive visual identity. Um, so as you can see, the, uh, pole features on the very top have that same custom red paint that would match the red on the entryway sign, which we can of course mute to be less vibrant. So these are the cost estimates that we looked at a few months ago. As mentioned earlier, there is concern that we will not have enough funds to install all four lighting styles during the same year. Uh, this chart, um, shows the board's priorities in October with a blue font indicating priorities that we previously discussed. So again, we will install the small area poles first. And the reason being is those will benefit both drivers and pedestrians. Now, at the very bottom, um, you'll notice that the control package, both options are in blue. And that's because the board did not feel strongly one way or the other. So that's something I want to revisit this evening. You know, although the smart system is not necessary today, it certainly could make sense to proceed with that package because the control system would allow for future implementation of a digital monitoring system. Um, so we could check temperature, monitor traffic conditions, roadway conditions, et cetera. Additionally, that more advanced control option feature, um, would provide feedback regarding power usage so we could check our energy efficiency. And at the very bottom there, the project total of 198,000 does include the smart control package. Um, but that total does not include the cost for water infrastructure updates, electrical pole installation, power updates, um, cost of labor or any markups and materials. So at the end here, I'll just want to get some feedback on which control package the board prefers. As mentioned during the entryway sign presentation, we currently have about $439,000 available in the Derby Catalyst Fund. This balance comes from an annual appropriation of $83,000. Uh, we do also have undergrounding funds available to help pay for electrical undergrounding work that Excel is going to do for us this year. And there are some leftover funds from other CIP projects that can be carried over into this project. Our other options for funding include the Community Development Lot Grant Funds for residential areas and potentially mixed use areas. Uh, there are also federal funds available. Uh, regarding those federal funds, as of today, Seth has identified one grant that we believe would be applicable to the project. So we are going to submit an application this quarter. But before we can actually begin to install any of the new lighting, we must first address three barriers. First, the area's water and sewer lines need to be redone in order to meet service needs of future development. Um, South Adams Water and Sanitation District is actively preparing to begin this work and they are partnering with our Communications Department to let the residents and business owners know about the upcoming work they'll be doing. Second, after the water district has finished their project, Excel Energy will go in and underground existing overhead utilities before any new light fixtures are installed. Something that we do have to keep in mind is that the streets throughout Derby are pretty narrow and there is a lot of overhead there right now. So undergrounding will be costly. Our Public Works Department has submitted a request to Excel and is waiting to receive a price quote for undergrounding the entire area. Um, but we won't be able to determine exact areas for undergrounding until after we, we receive that quote. But we will be sure to keep the board as well as the public aware of where that work will occur. Um, something to note is between the water district and Excel, that work will likely take the entire calendar year, especially because Excel's project will be so extensive. So our last barrier here is for the CCRA to determine if solar or standard electricity will be used to power the new fixtures as well as existing fixtures that staff has identified as reusable. So the rest of our presentation tonight will focus on whether or not it makes sense to utilize solar energy to power the Derby area lighting project. Based on the board's direction from October, staff did conduct some solar research. This effort included reaching out to other municipalities and speaking to their public works and city manager offices about how well solar energy projects have worked for their cities. Before we go into those findings though, I would like to share a few quick facts about the use of solar energy in the state of Colorado. Currently, Colorado ranks 12th in the nation for use of solar power. And as of last year, approximately 3.71% of our electricity was generated by solar power. Um, as of last year, there were over 300 solar companies in Colorado that included 35 different manufacturers, 177 developers and 136 ancillary businesses. Our research also shows that the prices for solar products and energy have fallen 8% over the last five years. This slide summarizes small scale solar projects that nearby municipalities have undergone. In Arvada, one of their housing developments was built to be solar ready. The town of Bennett, Bennett, Colorado utilizes solar energy to power their town hall and recreation center parking lots. Fountain uses solar energy to power various school zone signs. Montrose uses solar energy to power scattered street pedestrian and park lights. Johnstown has installed solar panels on several pedestrian crossings. And finally, Denver uses solar panels to power the lights in various parks. During the research project process, staff also heard about a couple of notable failed attempts to utilize solar energy that we would like to share as well. So in Brighton, there were inconsistencies in pricing and energy production that led to the discontinuation and installation of solar panels. Uh, the Director of Public Works reported that a big part of the challenge is a CDOT candlelight standard for illuminating highways and major roadways that just simply cannot be reached with the solar lighting. Additionally, they reported that the high cost associated with hiring a contractor crew for installation was a financial barrier for their city. Lastly, Loveland shared, um, they find solar less reliable and more expensive to maintain. However, they have only tried solar power for pedestrian crossings and traffic control devices. So based on that research, um, staff recommends not utilizing solar energy for the entire Derby downtown district, but we do believe solar power could be used for other operations as such as powering the entryway sign. There is concern over reliability of panels providing sufficient power during snowy days and long periods of overcast, a concern over panel stability during high wind storms, concern overreaching CDOT standards for major roadways as reported in Brighton. In addition, research shows that solar powered LED lights will likely not illuminate as well or as long during the nighttime as traditional electricity. Lastly, utilizing solar power will require, uh, modification to the existing light poles that we've identified as reusable. So I do appreciate your time and I would love to open the floor up to discussion and answer questions regarding, one, which control option we should use, whether basic or smart and whether solar power should be used for the Derby area projects.
Comments or questions from the board? Board Member Noble.
Um, it's, there was something actually I, I had hoped to do, which was to have a, uh, study session on Derby so we could have an overall look at it about what's planned because we're choosing things piecemeal in a strange way. And I'm curious how we see the lights that were selected as being relevant to the sign um, with its 50s goofy style other than the red color that will match, I guess. Um, so that's one question. The other is that, you know, there is an entire, uh, there's a new administration, you're talking about, uh, different ways to apply for grants. And, uh, potentially there would be money for solar, especially if you presented it in a, in a way um, that shows that we are uh, looking to the future, to an ideal future and reversing image and that kind of stuff. I do think that there is potential for solar and I would like to continue to think about it.
Sure, um, I can address all three of those if that's okay. So we'd be glad to have a study session with city council to revisit the Derby master plan and, um, reshare that entire vision with council. Um, regarding how the specific light fixtures were selected, uh, that was done by the professional that we had put together the 2018 plan uh, based off of the needs for pedestrians and drivers in the area um, and their different lighting heads, as they're called, um, you know, how they shine down and illuminate. So the only tie that they have with the entryway sign is, as you pointed out, with the color. Otherwise it was based off of efficiency. Um, and then lastly, yes, absolutely. If the board does wish us to proceed with solar, we would certainly apply for different grants. Um, that's a big part of why we're coming back tonight is so we know exactly which funding's, um, options we would be eligible for. That's a big part of why we're coming back tonight is so we know exactly which funding's um options we would be eligible for. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd rather have them say no than to decide in advance that the answer is no.
Good feedback.
Remember Noble? Or remember Madera?
Is it possible to have like a hybrid type thing where the lights are still tied into the grid? So when you do have those cloudy days or snowstorms, the the lights still come on?
I would imagine so. I am not in public works admittedly, so I don't want to promise that, but if that's something we can do with the sign, I don't see why it's not possible for the rest of the lighting. I'm sure it would be a little more costly. But if that's not a factor, it's certainly something I could ask our team to put some numbers together for.
Yeah, can we look into that? It'd also be helpful to have those numbers from Excel to know you know, what we're looking at and you know, if we did have solar, what would the cost savings be on energy over the life of of the light poles, the signage?
We can absolutely put that request out to Excel. I will say we've been waiting for our bid or our proposal on undergrounding for a couple of months now, so I'm not sure how timely I can get that back to you, but we will reach out and try to get that information.
Appreciate it.
Board Member Alan Thomas?
Thank you. Sure. I was just curious. I think um has staff or anybody looked at like the blind spots in the area? Because I think the concern to you'd be nice to have maybe all three types of lights and look at the safety over the cost. Because there's, I think, a lot of blind spot areas in that around that surrounding area. Plus, there's um, we have to take in consideration, but the homeless population, you know, so I think safety too needs to be addressed first over the cost. And then, yeah, thanks. And then, um, you know, um, Derby's been around like since the nineteen fifty, so has the South Adams Water District, um, like, are they familiar and aware of what's going on before we start installing the lights in case any of those old pipelines or anything need repaired? Is that planned for future? Has that already been looked into?
Yes, so I'll answer the water district question first. Yes, they're absolutely aware. They essentially redid their entire master plan for twenty twenty-one to focus on Derby, so they've put a lot of thought into that specific area. Regarding safety, I know that staff could not agree with you more. That was a huge consideration when we put I say we, but I was not a part of that process yet when that lighting plan was put together. And that's a big reason why in October, the board and staff came to an agreement on how to prioritize installation. If we can't install all the fixtures at once, those um small area poles will go in locations where safety is a concern and they'll benefit drivers as well as pedestrians. So we're certainly hoping, as you said, to prioritize safety.
Okay, and do we know with the South Adams and Water Borders, are any lead piping that may eventually need replacing, but you know, that would affect the lighting?
So Jenny, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, since I see you're on here, but yes, that's part of their project work is to update and overhaul any outdated infrastructure as well as upsizing. But we we and the water district both certainly don't want to have don't want to have to rip up the roadway more than once. We all want it done right the first time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
However, I just received a message from our staff water liaison, Ms. Jenny Oxmacher. She does not believe there is any lead pipe in the area. But confirm.
And and what about sewage repairs? Do we know that sewage repairs?
So upside up sizing the entire water sanitation sewage line is what the water district will be doing, yes.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments? None, we can move on. Steph, do you need anything else from us before we do?
Actually, yes, if the board wouldn't mind providing their preference on which control package we should install, whether we should just do basic, you know, on-off lighting power or if we should use that smart system, which would give options for future temperature studies, traffic monitoring, et cetera.
Remember Hurst?
For more reasons that I want to get into and bore you guys with, I think we have to do the smart control panel.
Board Member Noble?
Um, I was going to go with smart also. And if I can jump back to our earlier topic, if there's LED lights, they can be changed with the season too for the lettering. That was suggested by a resident who happened to send me a text, so I thought I that's a good idea. I'm gonna throw that out. Thank you.
Yes, um, the entire plan utilizes LED bulbs, whether we use solar power or not, so we are on the same page there.
Already great, then smart controls make sense too.
Perfect. If no one has a qualm um with using the smart control package, I just want to confirm the direction regarding solar energy. A board member noble suggested we apply for grants first to figure out what type of funding is available. Is that how we should proceed or does the board feel strongly in a a different direction? We just want to make sure we do this right.
Board Member Hurst?
So one of the solar lighting issues um that I know about is the cost to maintain. I've seen us run into it statewide before where we've gotten grants to do the solar upgrades and then a lot more expensive to keep them keep them going. That would be my biggest concern. It's not necessarily about the front-end cost because it's not incredibly expensive to do. It's the long-term maintenance cost. I think it's a good idea. It's just not sure this is the right setting with it being so um safety sensitive, if you will. So if there's no backup to solar, then I'm a bit concerned about that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Board Member Smith?
I like the idea of solar. Um, I just worry about the reliability of it. If there's no backup for it, I don't what are we gonna do for safety-wise? So I don't think solar going right away would be the option.
Word Member Noble?
Can't there be battery backup for for lighting? Or storing uh solar? Energy?
I can certainly ask our Public Works Department if it would be better to have battery backup or or traditional electricity, but yes, some sort of backup would be possible. It would require outfitting the lights for two different power sources uh which would be more costly, but as long as that's okay, we're we're happy to put that proposal together and come back with costs.
There are, you do bank solar. You can bank it. If you don't use it, you bank it and then you can use it later, so that's possible also.
Board Member Madera?
I think we should pursue solar, but um I don't think we should be exclusively solar. I I think we still need to be tied into the grid and have that backup for reliability purposes. And I would imagine if you're on a standalone solar platform, you have to have batteries because you don't have any sun at night when the the lights are on, so um you'd be banking the electricity during the day and then it'd be running off the battery at night.
Thank you.
Mr. Tinklinburg?
Thank you, sir. Just a quick question for the board, rather than uh us getting into the partial utility business of installing solar panels and backup, battery backup and all that type of thing. What if we purchased solar electricity through Excel and let them worry about the backup and all of that type of thing?
Board Member Grimes?
My comment wasn't going to be to respond to that. Uh, so first I'll I'll just say, um, I'm fine with solar. I think it needs a cost benefit analysis and kind of lifetime costs to to do it that way, but I definitely agree we need to be tied into the grid still and to to Roger's point, I think you have to be tied into the grid if you're purchasing it from Excel anyhow, so I'd be interested to hear more about that option, Roger.
Board Member Wadiola?
Thank you. Yeah, I would be interested in Roger's point. Um, the uh solar but tied into the grid.
We'll have Public Works reach out to Excel and get that information as soon as we possibly can. No promises on when that will happen, unfortunately. But we won't proceed until we can come back to you with that CBA. The consensus, um, ask Excel what it would look like to tie into their power. Is that accurate? Yes, okay, great. And we'll use the smart control package. Thank you, board. I appreciate the last hour of your time.
This time we will adjourn to the city council meeting using the same Zoom webinar. Would like to thank all the board members of the Commerce City Urban Authority for your participation this evening. Uh, we're gonna take a five-minute recess until we adjourn her convene that meeting, so please be back at seven oh six P M. Right, at this time I will call the regular meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll. Mr. Clerk, you're on mute.
Ah, thank you, sir. Mayor Huesman?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank? Councilmember Madera? Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Present.
Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Noble? I I see you're present, so uh mayor, if you're good, I'm gonna call that present. Uh, councilmember Wadiola?
Present.
Councilmember Hurst?
Present.
Councilmember Grimes?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Mayor Huesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion in a second to excuse those members not present. Councilmember Grimes?
So moved.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Second of the motion.
Have a motion in a second to excuse those members not present. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I didn't get the opportunity to answer present, although I was on screen, so I don't know.
The city clerk marked his presence since he were visible on the screen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grimes? All right, we'll do a voice vote. Please use your physical hands in the chat window. And that'll pass unanimously to zero. Next, I'd like to invite those in a Zoom webinar, unmute your microphone and join me in the pledge of allegiance while the city clerk displays the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. With liberty. Thank you. Ready for joining on that? First item of business on our agenda, citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address council and business and affairs of the city. All public comment will occur during citizen communication except for public hearings. Persons who registered to speak on the multiple items will be allowed to speak multiple times. Per council policy, citizen communication cannot occur before the time stated in the agenda without council approval. The estimated time in the citizen communication is seven P M. The time is now seven oh eight P M. City council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, we take your comments seriously, but do not generally respond to comments until later in the evening. Council must wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. Council members can ask questions of speakers if desired. The city needed advanced registration in order to participate in citizen communication for this meeting. If you're currently in this meeting to speak during citizen communication, please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you, so you may begin. If you do not respond or are disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. If council member wants to ask questions, please ask to be recognized when the speaker is finished. First on our list is Jeremy Rodriguez from Congressman Promoter's office.
Jeremy, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Good morning, uh, mayor and council. Thank you for uh having me today. Uh, it's been a while since I've been able to give you guys an update, so I'm glad to be here. Uh, I wanted to give you a brief update on kind of what's going on with Ed in D C and what we're doing here in the district. As you know, a lot of uh activity going on in D C, the American Rescue Plan, uh, and a couple of And a couple others, the American Jobs Plan and the American Families Plan. There's a lot going on regarding those three bills. Would love to share some details and discuss those bills with anybody who's interested and give us a call in the office. Lot of money that's going to be coming into the district. And there's also some local projects that Congressman Pro Mutter has submitted. Hopefully those come through and we have some good news for Commerce City. Also, there's a few things that I wanted to bring up that have been that have resumed operations due to COVID. The shuttered venue operations operators grant running and accepting applications. More information could be found at S B A dot gov. Another point is the restaurant revitalization fund established by the American Rescue Plan. Started accepting applications today and the more information on that could be found at S B dot gov as well. We're also going to be having been having the telephone town halls over the past year on a regular basis. And we'll be having another one this month on the twenty fourth from six to seven P M. Would love to have people join us to discuss those issues that they're interested in. Like to get some information from Congressman Pro Mutter. Please visit us at pro mudder dot house dot gov to be able to see what other events and how to participate in those events as well. So that is all I really have for you this evening. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those questions. If not, thank you for having me and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your time this evening. Does anyone on council have any questions for Mr. Rodriguez? Seeing none, we thank you again. Move on to our next speaker, who is Steve Douglas.
Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. Good evening, council and and mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I just got a few things here. Driving down Tower Road heading southbound this earlier this afternoon. And notice on the west side that there's trees planted in the future third lane. It it just would make more sense for them to have planted those trees. Not in the future lane area, but within the boundaries of the property that it's adjacent to. And I also want to thank the city for funding the green waste drop off that just happened over the weekend. But there was an incident my with my son. There was people there helping folks unload their trucks and everything. And I'm sure it's something that he wanted organic wanted to do. But being my son handicapped, uh, they were kind of speaking out loud and giving him a hard time and all that. And that's not customary for, I'd say, workers who are contracted to assist people with their grass. But out of the group. Anyway, I just hope with the next incident that that's not repeated with with other residents. The third thing is Commerce City has been talking about oil and gas over the last couple of years. And and the state legislators have put bills forward deals with greenhouse gases. And my question for this body is what is your reduction plan for greenhouse gases for Commerce City? Because this is based on comprehensive plan back in two thousand and ten. And just want to hear some feedback on if you guys have any options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Does anybody on council have any questions for Mr. Douglas at this time? Seeing none, we thank you for your time. Move on to the next speaker, who is Christie Douglas.
Hi there.
Oh, there you are. You'll have three minutes once you begin.
Well, actually, I would like to excuse myself from speaking this evening. I was going to talk about the environmental planning and policy update, particularly in reference to the city oil and gas permit applications. But I'm choosing instead to listen to the presentation and get a better understanding of what's going on before I make comment. So I appreciate you giving me the the time this evening. But I would like to take that opportunity to get a better handle on what's going on before I comment. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody on council have any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, we thank you for your time this evening. I'd like to thank you all for speaking with us tonight. If follow up is necessary, you should expect to be contacted by a staff member. Members of the public were also able to submit comments online by mail. Written comments were received by the deadline and included in tonight's packet. If anyone wishes to speak at a future council meeting, please check the meeting agenda and city website for information on how to register or submit written comments. Next on our agenda, presentations, we'd like to start with COVID nineteen update. Will interim city manager Tinklinburg please provide an update on the city's overall response to the COVID nineteen crisis?
Thank you, mayor. Just a few things. Businesses can apply for the paycheck protection program, PPP loan. Or in economic economic injury disaster loan or grant. And that's through the Small Business Administration. The applications will be taken through May thirty one. We've talked about that before. American Rescue Plan Act created also a twenty eight point six billion dollar restaurant revitalization fund. And that's to provide grants for restaurants sustaining financial losses. And the Small Business Administration started taking grant applications today for that. So spread that word around. And then C D P H E is now offering free at home rapid COVID nineteen testing. And that's for local food service employees and restaurant workers. So again, if you know any restaurant workers, food service employees, they can obtain free test kits for home testing. And then locally, we had some staff members at Eagle Point Recreation Center who had to quarantine. And that was due to one staff member's exposure. That affected the swimming operations. That was from April sixteen to April twenty three for several hours every day. And so it had an impact, but they were able to work around it to some extent. And then also have the same thing happen with an employee at the basically the Buffalo Run Golf Course and similar situation. But staff were able to make alternative arrangements in terms of, you know, who could cover different shifts and that type of thing. So the only impact there was that some golf lessons had to be rescheduled. So if you've heard any word about any of that, that's those were the reasons for that. Other than that, we're staying on our same basically closing open this plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tinklinburg. Does anyone on council have any questions for Mr. Tinklinburg regarding this presentation? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next presentation, which is our environmental planning and policy monthly update. Would like to invite Dominic Martin, now the environmental planner, to make the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right. So this is the environmental planning and policy update for May twenty twenty one. So we've broken it down into two parts. So the first part is the oil and gas update. We did not have any changes from the last update to the city permit applications. The the map shown in the previous presentation remains the same. There have been some updates to the state permit applications since the last update. All of the two A applications by extraction oil and gas have voluntarily been withdrawn by the applicant. So just to kind of provide an additional background on this, there are local permits and state permits that need to be obtained for oil and gas facilities. The operator has withdrawn those permits at the state level, but not the local level. So the local level permits with Commerce City are still in process. In conversations with C O G C C staff, and it was communicated that the permits were withdrawn voluntarily. And there was no indication of if or when additional permits would be resubmitted to the state for the previous extraction of the gas facilities. So at this point in time, there is only one pending state application, which is the Antelope Pad, which can be shown reflected in the map. As far as the city staff is aware, there's no, there has been no withdrawal of the the spacing unit applications. So you'll see that those remain the same from the last presentation. But the only pending surface location, which is a Form two A, is for petro operating LLC. So we'll go into the environmental update now. I'm going to provide some general updates on the process with SunCore. So SunCore, as you know, is in the process of renewing their Title V permit. There was a public public comment hearing that was held on Saturday from eight to ten with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. There is a additional public comment hearing that is occurring tomorrow night from six to eight P M. And if you're at home, you are able to access registration and presentation for that by clicking on the link that we have in the presentation. The state is accepting written comments up until the date of the hearing. And then Commerce City staff is scheduled to provide brief comments during the second meeting tomorrow night. As well as that, SunCore conducted its root cause investigation. And that was required to the March sixth settlement agreement, which was basically looking at root cause investigations and air quality violations between July twenty seventeen and June twenty nineteen. So the report highlights personnel process improvements and capital investments and physical upgrades that the refinery can implement to reduce upsets in the future. So again, this was a requirement from the consent order that that came into play last March. So a full copy of the training report can be found in the link in the presentation. But it really does look at some of the the initial causes and things that were causing events at the refinery and potential ways to improve. And then we wanted to write an update on the SunCore supplemental on environmental projects occurring at the state. So the evaluation committee formed by C D P H E has selected five projects for funding. Two of them were from Cultivando, so community air monitoring program A and program B. This is going to be a significantly detailed and robust monitoring program within the core city that looks at a number of different constituents in pollutants in the air and has a community facing kind of educational component as part of that. There was also a project funded for Globeville first D Smog Denver, which is clean schools, clean air, and it has a couple of monitors around schools in Commerce City and provides money and funding for electric lawnmowers. And then Tierra Collective or Tierra Collective is doing community stewardship of small parcels. So ultimately, the the city participated in this process through the application of a monitoring program, which ultimately was not selected for funding. The city is is very much excited and good, happy to see that a number of projects in the local community were funded through this. And then they they did vote to determine how to allocate an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars during a meeting on April twenty second or twenty sixth. So a quick update on the environmental policy development that's occurring. So at this point in time, all of the kickoff meetings that were originally defined in the scope have been completed. So the process with organizational sustainability. So there have been a number of staff interviews that have been scheduled with key staff stakeholders between May and June. So basically, this is the process. This is kind of the internal portion, looking at city operations and ways that Commerce City cannot operate in a more environmentally friendly and kind of self cost saving person. So a number of key constituent stakeholders within the city are being scheduled to conduct interviews and figure out ways to conduct process improvement events and things of that nature. There's also going to be a survey that disseminated to all city employees about ways that there can be additional improvements and kind of thinking about the the environmental sustainability through their other job functions. There's not a lot of update on the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, so that's currently underway. Looking at the the G H G emissions from the year twenty nineteen in Commerce City municipal boundaries, which is intended to help form policy development in the future. And then we want to provide an update on community engagement within the scope of the original project. As defined, there was the idea of creating sort of a steering committee and a citizen body group to help inform the city's direction on policy development and kind of help inform the direction that the city takes. So going through that process and determining how to go about that. So on May seventeenth, staff will bring will be bringing forward a resolution for the Environmental Justice and Environmental Policy Steering Committee, which looks at basically having a city group that focuses on environmental policy development, municipal operations and strategies, the methods to pursue equity around environmental justice. So staff was very intentional with including the name environmental justice and environmental policy within the title of the group to help to help inform and make it clear what the purpose of this group was in context of overall policy development, including a focus and emphasis on including community members and receiving input from historically underrepresented and marginalized communities. And then council would be conducting those interviews during the quarter two boards and commissions if the resolution is passed on May seventeenth. And then individual staff interviews with a couple of course, city council members were conducted on methods to effectively engage residents within the course of the environmental topics. So that's kind of where the the city is at within that process. And then just a drop a graphical depiction of where we are on that timeline. So we're anticipating that this should all be wrapped up within June twenty twenty two in terms of developing the overall initial set of policy recommendations. And from that point is when the implementation of policies and bringing forward ordinances would occur. So we're continuing to make progress on that. And then we did provide some information from the the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And all this information is publicly available regarding our quality exceedances by the refinery between March twenty seventh and April twenty second. There are a number of exceedances that occurred and a number of these are related to work that's being conducted with the plant turnaround and shutting off equipment and things of that nature. So there were two events on March thirtieth, which included an exceedance of hydrogen sulfide and an exceedance of sulfur dioxide. Three events on April thirteenth, which includes the carbon monoxide limit of five hundred parts per million, the exceedance of the twenty percent opacity limit. And then the exceedance of hydrogen sulfide of limit of one hundred and sixty two parts per million in flare gas. On the eighteenth, there is an exceedance of the twenty percent opacity limit. And then two events on the eighteenth, which is the exceedance of carbon monoxide and hydrogen sulfide, an exceedance of hydrogen sulfide on the nineteenth. Two exceedances of sulfur dioxide on the twentieth, which constitutes different measurements of that particular violation. And then two additional events on the twentieth, including H two S sulfur dioxide. And then two exceedances on April twenty first, including the sulfur dioxide exceedances. And then, as we do on a monthly basis, SunCore has provided a written update, kind of summarizing events that have occurred over the last month. That's included as an attachment in this packet and is provided on the monthly basis by SunCore. This update includes discussions on the refinery notification system, maintenance that's occurring at the refinery at this point. The improvement plan, community air monitoring and community investments. And with that, staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks very much, and thank you, Dominic. I noticed on the agenda that oil and gas monthly update is not on the agenda. That was one thing I wanted to have as a subheading. It does say SunCore update, but it does not say oil and gas monthly update. I just want people to be able to know where they can find that information. So I made that request when you came up with the new title. And it remained the same this month. So if that could please be changed, I'd appreciate it. It looks like there was a plugging operation on Highway two in the last couple of weeks. Was that what was going on near the railroad tracks? couple of weeks. Was that what was going on near the railroad tracks? And 104th?
So the city was not alerted about particular event. We can certainly talk offline and get additional detail. So you're you're talking just sort of off of Highway 2 around like 96 and 104th or?
It would be where the Antelope Pad is supposed to be.
Okay, so the city did not receive any sort of notification or alert that plugging and abandonment operations would be occurring there?
Okay. Given the fact that Cultivando's two proposals are so robust and our contract with the environmental group nearly doubled in the course of a very short period of time. Is there a reason why we need to expend that much money now that the Cultivando project will be doing even more than we were proposing?
So at this point, and we certainly understand, and just to provide a little bit of additional background on that, the Cultivando proposal is fairly robust and in depth and did go much farther beyond what the city put forward in its proposal. It has a community monitoring program of up to 25 monitors plus a monitoring lab. And kind of the thought where we have our environmental policy consultants kind of coming into play with air quality. There is a lot, lot that we're doing in the scope that's not necessarily air monitoring. So one of the initial tasks that we put into play was basically having the consultant come up with developing a community monitoring plan for the community. One of the things that we could potentially do to scale that back is is understanding the scale and the nature of Cultivano's proposals plus the the CDPE Camel Mobile Lab. And by the way, I did also want to mention that that Camel Mobile Lab that we had talked about in a previous study session with city council will be deployed next week at Eagle Point Recreation Center. So there is, there's going to be some monitoring that's occurring at the rec center this week. But ultimately, where we're at at this point in time is they're looking at kind of where Commerce City potentially could fit in with with additional monitoring efforts, or if it's necessary to do any at all. But there are a lot of efforts and items in terms of kind of looking at synthesis of data and trying to assess other components of environmental quality and air quality within Commerce City and help to develop policy recommendations. So while it's not necessary, necessarily monitoring, there's there's other work within that scope where the environmental consulting can provide a lot of really good technical data analysis and and direction to the city. And Jason, it looks like you have your hand up.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. To follow on to Dom's good points, I'd just like to be able to share that to what he was enumerating with the scope of activities that we have with the environmental consultant. An example of outside of this air quality monitoring, but we do have a scope of work that is looking at the development of a GHG inventory plant for this upcoming year. We are also looking at best practices for resiliency and sustainability of our operations. And we are also looking at the development of policy around environmental initiatives for development and other related programs and projects. So we have a very broad based approach to environmental and sustainability and sustainable practices here for the city. The air quality monitoring is just a component of that, hence why we see the costs as as I would say approved by council for our environmental consultants.
I I understand that, but I want to be fiscally prudent. And logic says to me that some of the things that we were planning to do are being done in a far, at a far grander scale than our group will be doing it. And do we need to expend that much money? And I would just like to have a review of that because it was an increase from what we agreed to originally in for the budget. And this was increased to $350,000. So why is it increased? And we know this is happening now. I just think it needs to be reviewed and I would like to have a have someone come back to us with that information as to why that's necessary. I also wanted to point out that Dominic said written comments regarding the CDPE Air Quality Commission that's looking at Suncor. And I just wanted to let people know that written comments actually have even far greater impact than verbal. While you may wish to make verbal comment, I know it's closed for tomorrow night already, but making your point is also justifiable. But written comments are what they put in the record and that's what they make their determinations on, not verbal. And then I had a fourth thing which had to do, oh, do you know what the other groups were that were chosen on April 26th?
Let me get back to you on that. I believe that information may have been released, so that that should be easy to get to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from staff or from council to staff regarding this presentation? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you again for all your time and putting this together for us, Mr. Martin. Now, it's very informative, especially troubling concerning the last several slides that you went through concerning all the exceedances over the permits and everything that are there. And I hope that state agencies that are looking at that take notice whenever they look towards approving future permits, the fact that we continue to day in and day out have a problem with this issue. So thank you for that.
I thank you.
Next on the presentations is going to be a Derby entry signage design review. Staff made the same presentation during the URA meeting earlier this evening. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Staff, do you have any questions for council before we move on?
No, Mr. Mayor, all the questions were answered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine procedural informational, self explanatory and non controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are four items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Grimes.
So moved.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the titles and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance 2326, an ordinance amending the 2021 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Local Affairs grant in the amount of $26,000 for officers' mental health support program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2021-27, a resolution authorizing amendment to contract with RME LTD to include 2021 asphalt mill and overlay project. Resolution 2021-28, a resolution authorizing amendment to contract with Silva Construction Incorporated to include 2021 concrete flatwork replacement and repair project. Resolution 2021-37, a resolution authorizing amendment to federal advocacy and lobbying agreement with Squire Patton Boggs LLP. Council sorry, Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank. Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes unanimously eight to zero with one excused.
Sir. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. Our first public hearing will be an amendment to the Nexus North PA DIA PUD Zone documents to incorporate 12 additional acres of adjacent property. The PUD amendment is case Z-945-17-19-21. Would like to remind council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. Councilmembers are not to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision. Rely only on the facts developed in the hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time I will open the public hearing and invite Jenny Oxmacher, Principal Planner, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of Council. Let me share my screen and we'll get started. So this case is Z945. It is the second amendment to the Nexus North PUD Zone document. The property is located on the northwest corner of Telluride and East 84th Avenue, and the applicant is Becknell Services LLC. This is the existing Nexus North PUD. It's approximately a quarter section. And tonight's amendment involves adding this additional 12 acres shown in red into the PUD that's currently part of the DIA Tech Center. Most of the surrounding area is zoned PUD planned unit development. We have the DIA Tech Center to the south. We have unincorporated Adams County with USA Airport Parking. We have the Second Creek Farms Development to the north and the Buffalo Highlands Development to the north. And we have the Rocky Mountain Arsenal to the west. Tower Road is to the east. The comprehensive plan designates this 12 acres as DIA technology. And here's an aerial photo of the site. So this is Tower Road here to the east. This is the Rocky Mountain Arsenal to the west. We have 88th Avenue to the north. This is the subject 12 acre site that we'll be looking to add to the Nexus North PUD amendment this evening. It's just to the north of the existing GE Appliances building. This is the Amazon facility that's under construction, the Lowe's facility that's under construction. And then you have the existing McLean building that you barely see just to the south. This is 81st Avenue. The subject site was originally annexed to the city back in 2017 and included as part of the DIA Tech Center PUD. The Nexus North site was annexed to the city in 2019 and the PUD was then amended back in 2020. The request tonight is to amend the Nexus North PUD Zone document to include 12 additional acres of land into that development. So here is the PUD Zone document land use plan. This shows all the property contained within the PUD. It's divided up into planning areas. We have planning area one, planning area two, planning area three, and planning area four. This is the 12 acres that they're looking to add into Planning Area 1. Here is the current Nexus North at DIA boundary, and then this is the proposed addition of those 12 acres. The, there are seven sheets within the PUD Zone document. The only changes are occurring on sheets one, two, sheet three, sheet four, sheet five, no changes in six or seven. The only change within the PUD Zone document is to add this additional 12 acres. There are no proposed changes to any of the uses allowed land uses, street cross sections, bulk standards, none of that is proposed to be changed as part of this amendment. So the current property, the 12 acres is vacant. It's now part of the DIA Tech Center PUD, part of Planning Area 10, has that comprehensive plan designation of DIA technology. It will be moving to Nexus North zoning and become part of PA1 within Nexus North. This still complies with the comprehensive plan designation and will allow for that property to be combined with the vacant land to the north that's already part of the Nexus North development and increase the potential for a larger development on that site. The proposed amendment does not change any of the approved uses, does not alter any bulk standards or design standards for the project. And it's just worth noting that the design standards for Nexus North are slightly more restrictive compared to DIA Tech Center. So this could result into a higher aesthetic for the development of the property. The required notice for this land use case was completed. And as of this date, staff has received no requests for additional information. On April 6th, the Planning Commission took testimony and voted five to zero to for this request to city council with a favorable recommendation. With that, staff is happy to answer any questions and Matt Garver, a representative for Becknell Services, is also available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Anybody on council have any questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, did anybody register to speak on this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public registered to speak on this item and no written comments were received by the deadline.
Very much. This time I'll close the public hearing. Looking for a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on case Z-945-17-19-21. Councilmember Grimes.
So moved.
Councilmember Hurst.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on case Z-945-17-19-21. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. Please use physical hands in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. And that is going to pass unanimously eight to zero with one absence. This time, looking for a motion in a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance Z-945-17-19-21. Councilmember Grimes.
So moved.
Councilmember Hurst.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance Z-945-17-19-21. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance Z-945-17-19-21, an ordinance approving the amendment of the Nexus North at DIA PUD Zone document to incorporate 12 additional acres of adjacent property located at the northwest corner of Telluride Road and East 84th Avenue into the PUD Zone District in Commerce City, Colorado. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank. Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes unanimously eight to zero with one excused absence.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is case Z-968-21 for the rezoning of property located at 7167 East 53rd Place. We'll remind council once again, use public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinion or indicate how you vote. Councilmembers not to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision and not to rely only on the facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time I will open the public hearing and invite Jennifer Jones, Principal Planner, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council. I'll be presenting this case to you tonight. If the city clerk would please bring up the presentation. Thank you. So this is case Z96821. Look for a property, a zone change for a property on 53rd Place. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, this is a zone change before you tonight. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from C3 Regional Commercial District to I2, a medium intensity industrial district. The site's almost two acres located off of 53rd Place, just west of Quebec. The future land use plan calls this property out to be commercial or industrial. It's a little ambiguous in this area, so I'll show you some maps to discuss that. And in addition to this zone change, there is a concurrent subdivision and development plan applications currently being processed, and those will consolidate the lots and propose allow for a building addition for an expansion to this property. Or expansion to this business, I'm sorry. Next slide, please. Okay, here's the vicinity map. The property is outlined in yellow. It is currently zoned C3, and you can see it is located west of Quebec, just north of 53rd Place. There to the south of 53rd Place is the TA Fueling Center. So you can see all those trucks on the aerial, and it is surrounded by other industrially industrially zoned lots to the west and the north with those commercial lots there adjacent to Quebec Street. Next slide, please. Okay, here's a little snippet from the comprehensive plan. As you all know, the comprehensive plan is not a lot by lot specific designation. It's general areas. And as you can see, the area west of Quebec Street is designated for commercial, and then further to the west is all industrial. And this property is sort of right there along that line. But the, there would remain properties to the east that are Quebec Street, so I'm sorry, the property in question, I believe, is called out as industrial in the comprehensive plan according to the map. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial, makes it a little bit easier to see. Again, the subject property for the rezoning is outlined in yellow. Again, the subject property for the rezoning is outlined in yellow. The existing business is located to the west. You can see that large building. To the east are those commercially zoned properties, and as I mentioned, to the south is that TA Fueling Center. And other properties to the west and north are all industrial properties. Next slide, please. There's just a few current site photos. The site currently has this property currently has an existing residential dwelling unit as well as outdoor storage. So with the property currently being zoned C three, those are both non-conforming uses, and you can see both of those in these photos. Next slide, please. Okay, as I mentioned, non-conforming uses are currently on the site, residential use, and then the outdoor storage, which is to the east and to the north on this site. And as I mentioned, the site directly west is the existing, is the existing business. So by rezoning this property, this would allow this site to be I two to match the property to the west. Therefore, those lots can be combined, and the existing metal products business could be expanded. They're hoping to do in addition to that business. Next slide, please. Okay, a little bit of case history. This is part of the original Kemp subdivision. Again, there in the core city of, in the core city. In nineteen seventy-two, those properties were rezoned to C three. And then there was the possibility of reverting to industrial if desired. As I've mentioned, the property is currently being used in both a residential capacity as well as most of the site is being used for outdoor storage. Both of those uses are currently non-conforming to the existing C three zoning. Next slide, please. So what are they asking for? The current request. The current request is change the zoning from C three to I two. There is a concurrent development plan under review to expand the building and the operations of the metal products. The expansion would allow the business to create additional products, right, to increase their volume. In order to do that, there's also a concurrent consolidation plat under review, which would allow these two properties, once they have the same zoning, to be combined into one large lot. And as I've mentioned, that would allow for this existing business that has been in the city for a number of years to grow their operation and remain in the city. Next slide, please. This graphic is just to show you kind of what's being under review. The current property is outlined in that bright teal color. The proposed addition would come in two different phases. The existing building on the lot to the west that's already zoned I two is shown in blue. And then there in that reddish color are the two potential additions. A little over twenty thousand square feet for each of those, so the applicant proposes to do the, the addition in phases, you know, over a few years. But that would allow the business to grow from almost twelve thousand square feet in size to over fifty thousand square feet in size, so a significant addition to allow them to increase their production. They currently, again, metal products, they fabricate metal into things like ductwork. And so that will, that consolidated, the rezoning would then allow the consolidation, which would then allow the expansion of this business. And as a part of that, the site would be able to have improved and enhanced drainage facilities as well as some additional landscaping improvements. Excuse me, so try to, next slide, please. So the Planning Commission did analysis for this project, and they found that the proposed I two zoning is appropriate. It's consistent with the future land use plan, compatible with the surrounding land uses environment. Adequate public services are available. And it will allow the site to develop in a manner that's consistent with the adjacent industrial uses. That area has since changed from residential long ago to an industrial area. Next slide, please. All six criteria of Land Development Code Section twenty-one thirty-two thirty-two are met for a zone change. Next slide, please. The required public notification is outlined on this slide, and all required public notification requirements were met per the code requirements. Next slide, please. On April sixth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, took testimony, and voted unanimously to forward this zone change request to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the findings of fact. Next slide, please. Staff is available to answer any questions. A representative of the applicant, the architect, Mr. Jemnikai is also on the line and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody on council have any questions for staff or for the applicant? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. What would happen to the house if it got rezoned?
The plan is for the house would be, the house would be demoed. And the owner of the house is also the owner of both properties, and that's part of their long-term plan.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Madera.
Are there any planned street improvement? It looked like there's kind of just like a two-lane road right there with a lot of like, you know, trucks kind of in that area.
Correct. There are some trucks in that area. This project was reviewed by our engineering division of Public Works. No, no street improvements were identified as being required by this, by this particular zone change.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Clerk, has anybody registered to speak on this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public registered to speak on this matter, and no written comments were received by the deadline.
Thank you. This time I will close the public hearing, looking for a motion in a second for the Planning Commission Recommendations. Councilmember Hurst.
Motion to accept the Planning Commission Recommendations.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on case Z dash nine six eight dash two one. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hurst.
Sorry, gum and course.
Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. Please use your physical hands in the chat window. It's going to pass eight to zero with one absence. Next, I'm looking for a motion in a second for the ordinance. Councilmember Hurst.
So I'm pointing it up right now. I thought you were going to read it. My bad. Motion to approve by council of seating ordinance Z dash nine six eight dash two one to rezone from C three to I two at the property located at seventy-one sixty-seven East Fifty-third Place in Commerce City.
Councilmember Grimes.
Second motion.
Have a motion in a second to introduce by council is seated and approve on first reading ordinance Z dash nine six eight dash two one. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hurst.
Nope, sorry.
Seeing no request for discussion, will the clerk please read the title and take a vocal vote?
Ordinance Z dash nine six eight dash two one and ordinance rezoning from C three commercial to I two medium intensity industrial district. Their property located at seven one six seven East Fifty-third Place, Commerce City, Colorado, as described in Exhibit A, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, Colorado to reflect said changes. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank. Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes unanimously eight to zero with one excused absence.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have case Z dash nine seven zero dash two one rezoning the property located at four seven six one East Sixty-ninth Avenue. We'll remind council, use a public hearing only to ask questions but not to express opinions or indicate how you'll vote. Councilmembers not to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision. Rely only on facts developed in the hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in Land Development Code. This time I will open the public hearing and invite Stacy Wezinger, City Planner, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If the clerk could bring up the presentation, please. Thank you. So as stated, this is a rezon request from the South Adams County Fire Department for the property located at forty-seven sixty-one East Sixty-ninth Avenue. Next slide, please. So this site is approximately point two nine acres. There's an existing building on the site of a little over twenty-five hundred square feet. And there is a proposed six hundred square foot addition to the south side of the existing building because the site is currently zoned C two, that addition can't be made until it is rezoned to public per the Land Development Code. And so that is the, the impetus behind this request for rezoning. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, the, the subject site is currently zoned C two. That existing building is a fire station or fire facility. It is a maintenance facility. And so with some of the growth overall in the city and the, the area that the fire district covers, they're reutilizing some of their existing facilities. So a while back, there was a rezon request for the fire maintenance facility in Irondale, and so maintenance facilities are kind of being over consolidated over there. And this facility will become fire station number one. Next slide, please. So here's the future land use map. As you can see, it is, there's public, commercial, and residential in the area. The commercial designation on the land use or future land use map does allow for public uses as a kind of a secondary use, so this, this reason would fit into that designation. Next slide, please. So this site was annexed into the city in nineteen fifty-nine and it was zoned, zoned commercial and built a commercial structure on that site. There was a use by permit in nineteen seventy-nine for that maintenance facility, and also the BOA at that time approved the north setback variant. And the existing building is about five feet from that north property line. And so the, the proposed, current proposal will not change that, that side or the, that setback. And so as mentioned, this six hundred square foot addition that they're going to add will help repurpose this building into fire station number one. Next slide, please. So the request rezon the site has some concurrent applications as well with a subdivision plat that would consolidate. These are the small Adam City lots that are, you know, about twenty-five feet wide. There's four of them on the site, and so they have to be consolidated also by the Land Development Code in order to build that addition. And then the development plan will cover the approximately six hundred square foot expansion for, it's an office and firefighter bunk space that will help that building become fire station number one instead of the current use of a maintenance facility. Next slide, please. So here's the current site aerial. I want to bring this up to show the surroundings and also that the current site is, is pretty much all paved. And so with this application, they are making some site improvements, including some additional landscaping and things like that, that'll bring the site into closer conformance with Land Development Code standards. Next slide, please. So this is that consolidation plat. It's pretty straightforward in that it's just consolidating those, those lots and not really doing any additional subdivision activity there, just consolidating the lots. Next slide, please. And here is the proposed development landscape plan. So I've highlighted a few areas on this just to show you the, we have the existing building kind of in the north center part of this lot. All the additional landscaping shown there would be bringing the site into closer conformance. The red is the, the approximately six hundred square foot building addition. There will be some reconfiguration of the parking spaces and things like that as well. And then that yellow is sort of an outdoor space for the employees on site to be part of the their amenities on the site as well. Next slide, please. So here are the proposed building elevations. These will meet with the Land Development Code design standards. Again, with that, that six hundred square foot addition being facing six, East Sixty-ninth Avenue to the south of the site. Next slide, please. So the Planning Commission heard this case and based on the request, found that the rezoning is justified, that the public zone is consistent with the future land use and comprehensive plan goals. It'll allow for the redevelopment of the property and the expansion of fire services in the area to serve existing and future anticipated development. And the proposed uses in the concurrent applications are consistent with this rezon request. Next slide, please. So with this, there will be some improvements made to the site. As mentioned, the additional landscaping will add to the, the neighborhood. Some of that pavement will be removed for those improvements, which just to improve the site overall. The access is expected to remain and minimal additional traffic is expected. And no PIA would be required at this development. Next slide, please. So this, all six criteria of LDC Section twenty-one thirty-two thirty-two will be met for a zone change with this request. Next slide, please. Here's the, all of the public notification required and met per the Land Development Code. And staff receive no comment or request for additional information on this case. Next slide, please. So on April sixth, twenty twenty-one, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, took testimony and voted five to zero to for the zone change to City Council with our recommendation for approval, subject to the findings of. And next slide, please. With that, staff will conclude our presentation. Available to answer any questions, Brad Bonnet with the applicant's team is also here if you have any questions.
Anybody on council have any questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Gibson, has anybody registered to speak on this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public registered to speak on this matter, and no written comments were received by the deadline.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing at this time, looking for a motion in a second on the Planning Commission Findings and Recommendations. Councilmember Grimes.
I move to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on case number Z dash nine seven zero dash two one.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on case Z dash nine seven zero dash two one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote. Please use your physical hands in the chat window. And that'll pass eight to zero, eight to one with Councilmember Hurst voting no and Mayor Pro Tim being absent.
I'd just like to change my vote to yes, please.
It'll pass eight to zero with one absence. Right now, looking for a motion in a second for ordinance Z national seven zero dash two one. Councilmember Grimes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to introduce by council is seated and approve on first reading ordinance Z dash nine seven zero dash two one.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to introduce by council is seated and approve on first reading ordinance Z dash nine seven zero dash two one. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, last city clerk to read the title and take a vocal vote.
Ordinance Z dash nine seven zero dash two one and ordinance rezoning from C two General Commercial District to public. The property located at four seven six one East Sixty-ninth Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, as described in Exhibit A and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, to reflect said rezoning. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank. Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes unanimously eight to zero with one excused absence.
Thank you. This time we'll take a five-minute recess. Please return at eight fifty. Thank you. This time we'll take a five minute recess. Please return at eight fifteen. I will reconvene our meeting and move on to resolutions. First up is resolution two zero two one dash three five. Appointing Roger Tinklinberger, city manager and approving an employment agreement. This time looking for a motion in a second. Councilmember Madera.
So moved.
Councilmember Hearst.
All second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution two zero two one dash three five, appointing Roger Tinklinberger, city manager and approving an employment agreement. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm very excited for us to offer. The full time city manager position to Roger. I think. You know, we had some good applicants in the process and through it all, we just realized that. The work that Rod, at least from my opinion, the work that Roger did as an interim was exceptional. We all appreciated the effort and the extra time. That he put into that role and recognized that he was doing two roles at once. I just want to say, you know, you have my full support moving forward. And I appreciate all the effort and time that the applicants put in to the process. I think we had some very fine applicants that will have great futures ahead of them. But at this time, I'm excited that we're going potentially going this direction with Roger.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I was just gonna reiterate that we appreciate all the work that Mr. Tinklerburg has done for the city, you know, having over. Twenty years of experience with the city and, you know, the institutional knowledge that he brings. He really shined as interim city manager, you know, filling those two roles as deputy city manager and. The interim city manager and, you know, we had a lot of great candidates that we interviewed during this process and. You know, I think we ultimately chose the the correct one for the city to move us forward.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please read the title?
Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty five, a resolution appointing Roger Tinklinberg as city manager and improving an employment agreement.
And we will do a voice vote. Please use your physical hands in the chat window. And that is going to pass unanimously, eight to zero with one absence. Congratulations, Mr. Tinklinburg. Next, we have ordinances on first reading. Good sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the honor and look forward to the exciting possibilities and challenges that we have. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have ordinances on first reading. We will start with ordinance two, three, two, eight, campaign finance complaint process. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Councilmember Madera.
Move to approve or move to introduce by council decision and prove on first reading or another twenty three twenty eight.
Councilmember Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to introduce my council is seated and approve on first reading ordinance two, three, two, eight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please read the title and take a vocal vote?
Ordinance two, three, two, eight and ordinance enacting a new section of two dash. One zero zero five in article one of chapter two of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, creating a process for handling third party complaints alleging violations of campaign finance laws. Relating to municipal elections. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank, Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, eight to zero with one excused absence.
Thanks, sir. Next, we'll move on to ordinance two, three, two, nine, a postage machine lease. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Councilmember Grimes.
I move to introduce ordinance two, three, two, nine by council is seated and approve on first reading.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to introduce my council is seated and approve on first reading ordinance two, three, two, nine. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please read the title and take a vocal vote?
Ordinance two, three, two, nine and ordinance authorizing the lease of equipment and the execution by the city of a master lease agreement with all copy products incorporated, a rental agreement with. Franco type postalia DBA FP mailing solutions incorporated and related documents authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement, setting forth parameters and restrictions and providing for other related matters. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank, Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, eight to zero with one excused absence.
Thank you. Well, now move on to administrative council business per council policy, except for emergency or unforeseen items. Council members are encouraged to submit administrative business items by the Tuesday before the meeting. With another council member's endorsement. This week, no council member submitted any business items in advance of this meeting. We'll move on to a letter of support for the Wayside Horn project. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to ratify the letter of support and to fix the mayor's signature there on. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. Please use physical hands in the chat window. Now pass unanimously to zero with one absence. Next, we have a letter of support for the domestic violence appropriation request. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff? Councilmember Hearst.
So my hand was to run the motion.
Does anyone on council have any questions for staff? Seeing no request for questions, looking for a motion. Councilmember Hearst.
Motion to approve the letter of support for domestic violence appropriation requests.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to ratify the letter of support and to fix the mayor's signature there on. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. Please use your physical hands in the chat window. Passes unanimously, eight to zero with one absence. To councilmember Wardiola, did you have some? Do any members of council have administrative business of an emergency or unforeseen nature or otherwise? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports. City manager Tinklinburg.
Thank you, Mayor. Number of items mainly for information. In terms of my activities, just wanted to remind you of the winter retreat, part three tomorrow evening, six o'clock. And then did also meet with Andres Carrera. From Senator Hickam Looper's office and he wanted to find out about projects we have going and then told me about the senators priorities, which are. Employment and workplace safety, mental health, affordable housing and homelessness as well as transportation and water. And then also met with. Jeremy Rodriguez, who you heard from this evening, basically same agenda, wanted to find out what we have going on and then. Congressman Prometer's priorities are the trades, training, infrastructure, safe banking. Housing, small businesses and HR one. Visa issues and DACA. We also had a meeting with Triangle Logistics, the CA Ventures Group. We continued to meet with them regarding their financial package for the project. And it turns out that they do need both the URA TIF in the metro district. The metro district is not allowed to fund environmental issues and therefore it. It has to be funded through the URA instead. And so they're still working on the package and that will be coming back to you. It looks like it's being pushed back to June now at this point. And then we also met regarding the par three golf expansion. In that meeting is regarding basically a proposal to expand the existing golf course by adding on this par three. Which would be on the west side of Chambers Road. And they would be connected by a cart path that will go underneath chambers and. We're pulling together information about the projected expenses and revenue estimates for for that expansion. The barn raising at the Sted School went well. It was on Thursday instead of Wednesday. It was well attended. And then we also met with the developer at Cutler Farms. And he's proposing a mixed use development at that site. And that's at the northeast corner of one hundred and twentieth and Buckley. In the city clerk's office, they have activated an election page. So on the city website, it's called. Well, just C three gov dot com with slash elections. And that's live with the election calendar, candidate information and also information regarding initiative petitions, if anyone wants to do that. Community development. Well, and also it impacts public works. We're seeing. Again, an additional increase in land use cases. It's now at one hundred and eighty one cases active. And that works out, you know, with the varying up and down, but it's been working out to twenty two to twenty five cases per planner. And that's versus the twelve to fifteen that's recommended per planner. So the result is that we're seeing. A longer period of time in terms of review time and that's just simply due to volume. Wanted to let you know that the seminar for the Derby businesses is still planned for May sixth. From three thirty in the afternoon to five o'clock and. People can attend that virtually or in person at the Business Resource Center on Monaco Street. Translation services will be provided. And then Parks and Recreation Paradise Island Pool is planned to open on Memorial Day weekend. In fact, that'll be on Saturday, May twenty nine. Reservations through Active Net are required and each time block has a two hundred person limit on capacity. The time blocks are from ten to noon, one to three and four to six with cleaning in between those blocks. And then also payment must be made at the time of the reservation with no refunds for cancellations or no show. And then Hundred and Twelfth Avenue Bridge, the bids have been received and the contract will be coming to you for approval on May seventeen. That's the Hundred and Twelfth Avenue Bridge over the Fulton. Ditch. Just wanted to specify that. The MS four coordinator started today. My name is Jennifer Strauss. So we're excited to have her onboard. And then also it appears that Congressman Prometer has turned in. A letter of request to the appropriations committee to fund six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for quiet zones on the UP Railroad. And Pacific, Union Pacific, I'm sorry, at sixty ninth and seventy second avenues. So that's quick update on on city staff activities. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Madera.
Sorry, I had my hand up for a report.
Councilmember Grimes.
Same, Mayor.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes, I had questions for you, Mr. Tinklinburg. This homelessness event that is occurring on Thursday, the Zoom call. I don't recollect that the city council has invested any time in discussing homelessness policy. Or what our plans are. Am I forgetting? Am I forgetting?
No, I think that's correct. This, I believe, I'm not sure if Michelle Kleimer is available, but I think this is more tips for the businesses. On how to deal with it, basically because they've encountered more more of it in in the Derby area.
Okay, so I think I had, I believe I said I was going to do this and I didn't get it accomplished, but I will this week. I did look at the. Sheet that was provided to us, the form for requesting study sessions. I would like to request a study session on homelessness. And I hope another council member is interested in doing so. The form asks us if we have talked with a department head. Is there a relevant department head on homelessness?
Well, number one, we're going to revise that form to make it more relevant to the current city policy. And then also make it easier to use on your iPads. But then to answer directly your question, Carolyn Keith has been coordinating some of the homelessness initiatives for us. But that's being done in collaboration with Chief Nichols because it sort of overlaps both. So right now Carolyn Keith would be probably the the best department director to to. You know, work with you on on getting that initiated.
And who does a homeless navigator report to?
She reports in Parks Recreation Golf, so under Carolyn.
Okay. And then the other that I would like to put in for a study session on is the Derby area. So that we can be up to speed on what the comprehensive idea is for the Derby area based upon the Derby plan of ten years ago. And I apparently some revision that occurred three years ago as well. So I will be making requests for for both of those this week.
And would that be the the Derby area plan? Then basically you want to revisit that?
Yes, just, you know, because we are approving things tonight. There is discussion of signage. There was discussion of lighting. And if we do it piecemeal, if we aren't all coming at it and we aren't all on the same page for the discussion, I I think it makes it difficult to be making informed decisions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Man, with respect to the request for study sessions, Mayor, thank you. So that will be made. The form will be changed and made available as I understand it. And then you'll make the request for a study session. That'll be placed on the agenda for the next meeting's administrative council business when the council would vote on it, given the work involved. I just want to make sure everybody was.
I wasn't understanding that we have to vote on whether it would be a study session that we simply needed two people to ask for it.
No, the two people requesting an item was to. Was to, the endorsement of a second person was to put something on administrative council business as a recommendation to make sure there would be some support on council for it. But because study sessions take more than an hour of time, there would be an affirmative vote of council needed to schedule that item. Of course, any three members of council can schedule a study session, can call a study session. There's a bit of an incongruity there like a like with a special meeting. But that's the typical practice is that council would vote on it under.
The problem with that is that it's it makes it two weeks away and then at least another month after that. So that would be six weeks away probably by that point. Is that correct?
Um, it depends on study session availability and the time it would take based on the topic, a council member requests and and the council authorizes. We passed administrative business in the agenda already tonight. You could amend the agenda to reopen admin business if that's the desire of council to make that motion.
Okay, I will, I will wait, but I hope that we don't get any other policy discussions before us that have to do with either of those topics. And that the discussion that occurs on Thursday night is strictly information about connection because we need really need to have a conversation about. The important issue of homelessness in Commerce City. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Tinklinburg regarding his report? So then would like to thank you for your report, sir, as well as all the hard work of you and your staff and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheasley.
Congratulations to you and to miss you, all of you, and to Mr. Tinklinburg. No other report this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I wanted to report that I got a call from the governor's office. On Friday and. You know, it's basically to inform me that I'm being considered for an appointment to the rack where the Regional Air Quality Commission by Governor Polis. And so I'd be filling one of the government seats and I talked to the city attorney. And since it's not a council appointment or a commerce city specific seat. I guess there's not a boat that's required, but I just wanted to inform everyone and, you know, if anyone has any concerns or wants to talk about it, you know, they can reach out. Reach out to me offline and we can talk about it. And, you know, I'm just excited that I'm being considered and, you know, I think it's a good opportunity to serve in this capacity. And have, you know, someone with that grew up in Commerce City and lives here, have a seat at the table. That would be, that'd be great.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start by saying congratulations, Councilman Madera, on the being considered for that seat. That's that's very exciting and and I hope you. Are chosen for the seat. So good luck with that. I also wanted to report that I attended the barn raising and beam signing at the Sted School last Friday. Very exciting to be a part of that and such a unique school and amenity even for our community. So looking forward to seeing that progress through the summer and open for our first freshman class there in the fall, actually in August, I think they said. So if anyone is still interested, they had a few spots open for enrollment for this year still. So. And then the other thing I wanted to make note of, it became. Came to me last week that there's a population we're missing in the vaccination world and that's people who are. Homebound or under home health care. And I just wanted to offer to those watching or please pass along the message that I'm happy to help make connections. For folks who are in that situation. And so please reach out to me if you're having trouble getting a provider to vaccinate someone who is homebound. And that is all.
Councilmember Hurst.
I just wanted to show my support for Councilman Madera. I think that's that's awesome. I hope that works out for you.
Any other council members wishing to make a report? Seeing none, I was on vacation last week and do not have a report to give myself. So that being the end of our agenda, we will adjourn. Have a good night and have a good week. See you next, see most of you tomorrow night for our retreat and for the rest of you. See you next week.